Welcome back, everybody. I tried to be smooth this episode. Welcome back, everybody. Another episode of the Weekend Hot Podcast. Your man, your brother from another, KZ in the house, and my man, Big Time Swag. Swag, swag. You know what I'm saying? Swaggy Pippin. Anyway.
Yeah, yeah. Paddy Pippin game.
You know, but we back again, another episode, man. We've been so happy, man. Oh, thank you. We look, actually look like we got some more subscribers, so peace to the new subscribers. Thank you for joining. And we actually gonna be setting up where, um, yeah, well, come on in, come on in. We gonna set it up where we have it now. Uh, we get into a circle where you can actually join on the YouTube page and then, uh, now it might cost you $2, but it will have different tiers, uh, maybe from like $2 to probably like $8, you know what I'm saying? Something everybody can afford, $10. $10 would be the max, be the highest VIP member, and then we'll go five.
Family of the family.
Yeah, yeah, just a little something. But for now, uh, keep the donations coming, uh, coming in, you know what I'm saying? Keep, please, like, like, subscribe and share the content. Uh, some of y'all been doing that, so I'm happy with that. And I'm proud. That means actually we doing some good shit there.
Yeah, man. Trying to make an impact where I can, you know?
You know, hey, hey, but, uh, another week, another week, uh, in this world, and, uh, we keeping up with the news and, uh, different trends and things, speaking on it from our state of mind here on the Weekend Hot Podcast. If this is your first time joining this, uh, so just wanna let you know what we do, but we'll get right on into it, man. It's a lot of stuff to talk about this week. Uh, shoot, the news cycle's going crazy, a lot of things and events in the news. Oh, before we start, I do wanna say, excuse me, um, don't forget November 5th, uh, there is going to be the FBA Reparations March on Washington DC, uh, with Brother Tariq Nasheed, um, go ahead, Brother, uh, Dr. Boyce Watkins, um, uh, Brother Kaaba.
Brother Islam.
Brother Riza Islam's gonna be there, uh, uh, Dr. Randy Short is gonna be there, Dr. Short is gonna be there, um, um, I'm gonna get the flyer up y'all while I'm so, but please, please make sure you, um, uh, go ahead and, uh, you know, if you can get to be Washington DC for November 5th, uh, go ahead and do so. Um, it's gonna be a great rally.
And if you can't make it, try to support it somehow, you know?
Yeah, if you cannot make it, try to support. Oh, also, I may wanna add some, actually, Sister Teslin Figaro. I'm sorry if I said your name wrong, Figaro, uh, Professor J Small, uh, Professor Jay Small, he was in colors. Uh, Dr. Myatt, uh, Sister Dr. Myatt, Dr. Kaaba, Kamine, Marcel Dixon, Brother Marcel.
Marcel.
Out of South Carolina. Yes, 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 uh, and Connie Collins. Saturday, November 5th is gonna start at 11:00 AM. And for more information, you can go to rallyforreparations.com. Uh, make sure you come be a part of a historic event, um, hosted by Brother Tariq Nasheed and co-hosted by Jade Arundel. Uh, so let's go ahead, make sure we go ahead and support that. Matter of fact, you know, this, 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 you know, we don't have to rush it. I'm gonna show y'all the flyer real quick. So give y'all some visuals, man. I should already had this up, but it just hit me. I said, man, you know what? I got to go ahead and advertise, uh, for the brothers and sisters.
Hey, hey, you know they say believe half of what you see and none of what you hear, let's show them.
Exactly, exactly. So here we go. Bam. Okay, so here you go ahead and, uh, it's gonna be a great hell of an event. Let me actually give it the full. It's gonna be hell of a, a hell of an event.
Zoom in, y'all, zoom in.
You know what I'm saying? Zoom in, yeah, yeah, you gotta zoom in on that one. Um, but yeah, we really going to, um, really go, uh, take a look. There we go. Try to see if I can get it a little crispier for y'all. But, um, yeah, yeah, if you can, uh, if you can, come out, uh, please do. Um, you know what I'm saying? Uh, it's possible that I may be in attendance, um, you know, uh, possible that I may be in attendance there. I'm trying to get my schedule changed around because of it. First of all, the rally was supposed to be on the 15th of October, and then they had some complications getting permits. As I don't know if you and, if you were in the Twitter spaces, you know what happened, they didn't get the permit.
That would have been yesterday.
Right, then somebody else got the permits out of nowhere, and now they gotta rally and they wanted to re, to join in and stuff. And nothing against the brother, um, who's doing it, but you know, we don't really know who he is, you know?
Hey, 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 this has shades of Martin Luther King and Adam Clayton Powell.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying? But yeah, no, I mean, not, not, not for the brother, um, he has some, I guess, some thorough people. For even Tariq said, one of the brothers was thorough that he was messing with, but it's just a coincidence that, uh, you know, Brother Tariq was planning it. I know he's planning this since July. I mean, you was talking about this June, July.
Yeah.
And then all of a sudden, you know what I'm saying? He didn't get it. But anyway, the positive thing is it's gonna be November 5th. Please reach out. Yep, if you can't make it, donate, um, try to, um, do all you can, um, in their spirit, make some noise via Twitter or, you know, wherever, or even in your neck of the woods, so, uh, but moving right into it, we'll get right into it, y'all. Weekend Hot Podcast, first story up, I got a good story for y'all. This is some crazy stuff I seen in the news, um, this week. We actually just started off, uh, with something crazy. There was a, uh, this is kinda funny to me. There was a jewelry store, you know, jewelry is coming up, y'all, you know, Christmas time, people buying stuff, uh, for people and things like that. But yeah, there was a jewelry store who did some, uh, some minor fit touch-ups to, uh, advertisement they had, you know, because they was advertising, you know, rings, uh, for, um, you know, the customers like Kate Jewelers and things like that. Uh, but what they did caught a lot of, you know, backlash. Uh, the jewelry store got caught whitewashing, um, to create, uh, whitewashing the person's hands, the black model's hands. And, um, as you see, now my picture is a little blurry, y'all, but if you see the lower right, if you can see that lower right, you see that black hand right there. Now, if you look up to the top, that white hand is them changing the black hand to white.
Nigga, that Stacy Daz hand.
You know what I'm saying? So I don't know if y'all can see my hair off, you can, but, uh, there's a, uh, you know, the type, the white hand at the top is really just black hand at the bottom. They just went, they, they went straight Adobe and, uh, you know, Photoshop and, and straight. You know what I'm saying?
Adobe Gillis.
Yeah, man, uh, so they was catching a lot of, uh, backlash. They're a London-based jewelry company called Janine Jewelry. And, uh, basically, they posted a black creator's photo, uh, with a white, whitewashed tan, uh, in the TikTok video. Night discusses how one of her friend's photos was whitewashed by a jewelry company. She says that her good friend, a black, uh, cottage core, Instagrammer and TikToker Chazlyn Yvonne posted a picture on her Instagram showing herself with her friends, uh, wearing jewelry items from different brands. One of them was, uh, Janine Jewelry. So basically, you know how some TikTokers, YouTubers get together, you know, they, they, they'll, uh, show you different products and stuff. So they had one of their products, and soon after the picture, uh, be posted by Janine Jewelry, but with her hand being completely whitewashed. Uh, so the brand sells mostly jewelry pieces that appeal to the fans of, uh, cottage gore, royal core, and other aesthetically feminine trends or subcultures. Uh, after many complaints about this incident to the jewelry brand, they reposted the original picture, unaltered, and gave a statement. In the statement, the brand stated that the black creator's skin color was changed in the picture due to a filter. More times than often, black women are excluded from aesthetics that are overt, overtly feminine or girly. Stereotypes like the sapphire of the angry black woman paint women of color as being loud or dramatic or being masculinized. Uh, we seen this showcased numerous times in public. So, um, so what are your thoughts?
Hey, man, hey, it looks like that hand got dipped in a dip from Roger Rabbit, remember that? Y'all, man, but I ain't gonna lie, man, that kinda do look like Dr. J's hand on the box.
I know, man, the hair look kinda, I thought that was Shaq head at first. I'm like, damn, her friend has some big ass heads, man, them heads. Kawhi Leonard hands, the claw. Call her or call your friend the claw. Shit, they probably trying. You know what I'm saying? But still, the fact that they go lighten the hand up, you know what I'm saying? I like, that's, 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 that's.
Hell, yeah, and that's like the exact opposite. Remember when, um, uh, um, after OJ took him on the chase? And then Tyne put out that article and had that dark ass picture of OJ?
Right. Yeah, I do remember that back in the day, yeah.
Yeah, and, and they was talking about it from a different way, and they tried to say that's how the lighting was, but no, they was trying to make him look ominous.
Well, you know, Black is synonymous with bad things, crime.
I know, hey, as I say, cue the beginning of Malcolm X.
You know what I'm saying? So, you know, the jewelry people probably, like, sold the friend, she probably was giving her review on the rings. Like, oh, look, I love these rings, you know what I'm saying? These rings hot. So, and she posted it on her Instagram. So the jewelry company seen it, it was like, oh, hell no, she doing our jewelry? No, we gotta lighten that hand up, alright. Cause you, did you, this is what I'm thinking. The jewelry company saw the picture, was thinking like, oh, man, if people see that black hand wearing our jewelry, or maybe that, you know, them hands was manly, or it could have been like them black masculine hands, uh, sporting our jewelry, you know? We are normal customers, they ain't go buy the stuff, you know what I'm saying?
Like a woman Phil hand.
You know what I'm saying? Like. You know what I'm saying? The woman king hands. You know what I'm saying? And once again, you know, this is a comedy show too, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's like this hand held a shield.
You know what I'm saying? But I mean, but that's still, that's still like targeting. That's like, you know, you got to, we gonna lighten it up.
Yeah, that's a bit extreme. That's like on the Michael Jackson side of the game.
That hand is big though, I ain't gonna lie, dawg. Look, that's a man hand. You know what I'm saying? Them some, them some, uh, rescue your hands in this.
Hey, oh, yeah, them some dumb fucking dick, oh, sorry.
No, 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 man, but no, for real though, man, um, like I said, man, I mean, that's a clear to me. It's just, I, I just think that's what it is. The, uh, the, the jewelry company was like, oh, we can't sell no jewelry if this big black ass hand has got our stuff on. That's my 10th world koofi theory.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, of course, they don't wanna see us advertising, and you, like, you know, if you, if you were to, um, sell a, uh, well, I mean, you see it more now, but generally, when they try to sell high-end things such as like, let's say, a Ferrari or commercial, you ain't gonna see no black person driving that, unless they famous.
Yeah, yeah. Lewis Hamilton. Sorry, Lewis Hamilton.
Man, you ain't gonna see like, hey, hi, I'm such a, I'm K, I'm KZ, I'm from Mercedes. They're like, no, no, I don't want you selling, we want Billy.
Yeah, yeah, Jabal ain't gonna be whipping pushing the wheel.
With the hair, with the hair blowing in the wind, you know what I'm saying? So, um, I mean, it's just messed up though. They should, I just, like I say, I think they should have just left the shit alone. If I was her or him or whatever the, you know, person is, I would probably try this. I mean, I guess you can't sue. You, I mean, what you gonna sue for? You know, you doing a review and they, I guess you, maybe you could sue for likeness of image. Maybe, I don't know. Y'all leave a comment. I don't, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, you might, you might be able to get him to settle for a couple coins.
You know what? Yeah, you know what? Yeah, sue to get them couple coins, man. Refrations now. But moving right along, y'all, uh, don't forget to hit that like, subscribe button. Going right into it. We doing a lot of little light news first here. Um, this thing I wanted to, uh, oh, another one from over, uh, across the pond, from our brothers and sisters across the pond. What up, y'all? What up, Mike? How are you, Mike? That's probably messed up. Um, this sister here, she's from across, our sister, one of our sisters from across the pond, um, African sister from across the pond. Basically, the reason she's in the news is because, um, well, everybody knows about all the news with, um, uh, Queen Elizabeth and everything, uh, passing or whatnot, and, uh, she's part of a orchestra that actually was supposed to play, uh, for the Queen, the Queen's passing to celebrate, you know what I'm saying, her life or whatnot. Um, but guess what? She refused. I'm surprised, but, um, you know, shout out to that sister. She stayed on code. Um, so there's been outbreak.
Hey, yeah, I mean, that, I, hey, I imagine for the bridge, that, that would probably be the highest honor to be asked to play for the Queen, you know?
Right, and you know how they was falling out crying for her, like, that was their best friend, and she the one who, like, enslaved your people, took all y'all's resources. You know what I'm saying? Took all y'all's resources, and then when you try to come to her country, they gave y'all the Heisman, the Heisman pose, like, ah. You know what I'm saying? So, uh, you seen a lot of, uh, what we call Tenzin Cooning, you know, crime. It, it, it basically, it is the same thing, you know, with some slaves left to plantation, oh, man, boss, we sick, oh, you know, saying they be so brainwashed. But it's why they so brainwashed into, I got Stockholm syndrome, and they such in a sunken place that they just, you know what I'm saying? Are pretty much broken, spirits.
The Motesas.
Broken, but this, yeah, Motisa? He's from the Motisa tribe.
Yeah.
Motisa tribe, yeah, watch this. And you know what? That's fucked up. But Pasi, that was a good movie though. Uh, but no, for real, that's the same shit, you know? But I'm glad, uh, cause you know, we don't see a lot of, um, we see a lot of our brothers and sisters, you know what I'm saying, from the motherland.
Codified though, right there.
Yeah, and we don't see a lot of them, especially from the UK either. We do, it's a lot of, uh, African brothers and sisters in the UK. A lot, don't let me say this wrong. There are a lot of them that are on code, but you see, send to see a lot more that are not. And, um, and I'm glad we see one that is. And let me get, let me break down and get his sister, uh, just basically what happened. Basically, an orchestra, uh, you know, he received more than a million pounds of public money, refused. They refused to play the National Anthem after the Queen died because it said it symbolizes the racist British Empire. Uh, Cheniki, the Cheniki Orchestra performed at the Lucerne Festival of Switzerland, uh, during the mourning period, but founder and artistic director Chi Chi, uh, Wanaku banned the playing of God Save the King. Uh, the move has been criticized by, um, the military police and musical figures who point out that Miss, uh, Wanaku has accepted honors, including a CBE, so that's from kind of, uh, British award. In the email, Miss Nawanku sixty-six wrote that Cheniki Orchestra is full of musicians who are not from the UK and, uh, many who are the direct result of their ancestors being enslaved, that we will not be playing the National Anthem in Lucerne. Uh, the sixty-two strong group is made up of a majority of black, Asian, and ethnically diverse musicians. The group did mark the death of, uh, Prince Philip in April twenty twenty-one with a minute's silence. But Miss Nawuku said last month, many in the orchestra were incredibly upset about being made to do that, uh, with the reason being that the empire is virtually entirely built on racism and the plundering of Africa. Damn, at least she knows that. Um, in the email, she said, I would be extremely uncomfortable imposing it on people who are not British and who are not, uh, nationalistic, and the list goes on. It does not mean we are not sad that the Queen has died. So basically, that's her way of saying that I'm not trying to be disrespectful for the dead. Okay, you know, she died, I ain't go.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm a pass.
But at the same time, you know what I'm saying? I knew what she represented. That's what she's saying. One insider said Chi Chi was adamant that the anthem represents the British Empire, which was a racist institution and which was responsible for the persecution of many of the ancestors of the players in the orchestra. Uh, some members of the orchestra actually agreed with her because they too had concerns about some of the anthem's lyrics. But I think it's fair to say the majority of the orchestra wanted to do something for the Queen. Uh, some members preferred the idea of minutes silence. They wanted something to be dubbed, and nothing was done. Um, uh, London-born Miss Nawaku and acclaimed double basis of Irish and Nigerian descent is one of the most high-profile figures on the UK classical music scene. And, um, so she is, uh, of Irish and, uh, uh, Nigerian descent, Sister Nawuku.
Hey, she might be my distant cousin because that's strange, how my lineage just set up.
You know what I'm saying? So, um, uh, shout out to her, man, for being on code, man, like, I mean, cause it sounded like other people in the band, which is probably the Asians or whoever. I'm not gonna try to single nobody out, y'all.
Or, or, or did somebody didn't wanna step on those toes or?
Right, but I applaud her for saying, no, we not doing no minutes silence. We ain't doing none of that shit.
Say, God save our Queen.
You know what I'm saying? You know, like, people, so some of them felt like, oh, I don't wanna step on the toes, I'm scared, so we need to do something, but she's. I like the fact that she stayed down, stuck on code.
To the line, you hear me?
So, I mean, cause it ain't disrespectful not to say nothing. It really ain't. You know what I'm saying? So I would rather, you know what I'm saying? She said they weren't playing, and they didn't play, so I salute to you.
I ain't trying to step on no toes, but.
You know, exactly. I mean, and, um, I might, I mean, she didn't, um, she did, she, she thought about her ancestors on her night, you know, on African sides. Like, damn, she the reason that, her family the reason that this shit fucked up. We fucked up, and the resources go. I'm not about to sit up here and play, uh, you know, all this music like we just endear you or revere you.
Hey, man, but hey, uh, have you ever seen a third verse of the National Anthem, the Star Spangled Banner?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Same stuff, man. That's some honorable stuff. That's honorable, you know what I mean?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, uh, but it was other people to say that the fact that they didn't perform, um, this is one, um, this dude Norman Liebricht, of course, he's some kind of classical, um, music, uh, connoisseur over there in the UK. He would say it's terribly disappointing that a young British orchestra representing the country during the weekend state of mourning had was unable to perform the National Anthem as a mark of, uh, respect to the late Queen. That's damaging not to, to Britain, but to Cheniki. So he's saying, he's saying, uh, that's damaging to you, not British. Me, meaning like, you, you know, you gonna mess up your career doing this, and you know what? I salute her again, man, because you don't give a damn about, um, she don't give a damn about, um, you know, that's, and that's, that's being selfless, man. That's what being on code is. It's not like, um, you being selfless, not, not thinking of like, oh, well, I gotta look out for me, sorry, y'all. Cause there's a lot of people who did, that like, I, I gotta, you know what I'm saying? But.
Because potentially, you know, that could have really helped boost their platform, you know?
Mm-hmm. But with this, what, what she did, that boosts her platform forever because now you're ingrained in history. Now, 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 um, that, that stand.
A lot of equity with us, you know?
That stand, you gonna be, you gonna be, your, your name will be bringing forever, you know what I'm saying, over there for, for taking the stand and doing something different, saying, man, I ain't just gonna bow down to this bitch.
I know.
You know what I'm saying? You know what I'm saying? I, even in death, I'm not about to bow down to your punk ass, you know what I'm saying? So, uh, shout out to her, man. Shout out to her, you know, and you know, you know what I'm saying? We don't get a lot of, um, our brothers and sisters across the pond to be on code, so I gotta shout out the ones that are.
Hey, that's B1 for real.
Yeah, for real. Moving right along, people, moving right along. Uh, we gonna, we gonna switch it up here. I'm gonna throw, I'm gonna throw, I'm gonna shit, throw you a pass. No look to my man Swag, uh, for the next story. We gonna start it off with in sports here.
Greetings, everyone. Top of the morning to you. Alright, so one of NFL's more interesting plot twists came recently when the Carolina Panthers made his assistant Steve Wilks their interim head coach after firing Matt Ruhl after five games into his second terrible season at the helm. If you think I'm about to tell you why that's a reason to be optimistic about the class action racial discrimination lawsuit that's pushing the NFL to make progress, well, you might wanna stop right there and avoid having your dreams shattered. Wilks, if you weren't aware, is one of the current and former black NFL head coaches who joined former Miami Dolphins head coach Brian Flores' class action racial discrimination lawsuit against the NFL and several of his teams. That, that lawsuit alleges that the league maintains a system that sets black coaches up to fail at ascending to the head coach position by conducting sham interviews under the league's Rooney Rule. Left unsaid in the lawsuit is, is how frequently NFL teams have bypassed qualified black coaching candidates in favor of disasters waiting to happen, which brings us to the Panthers and Ruhl. The Panthers are off to an awful start with only one win in five games. Uh, last season, no, last season was no better nor the year before that, with Ruhl losing twenty-seven out of the thirty-eight total games he coached before Carolina Candy. Prior to that, Ruhl's NFL experience consisted of being an assistant coach on the New York Giants staff. Otherwise, he had coached the college ranks at Temple and Baylor before getting a shot at NFL head coaching game with a $62 million contract attached. The Panthers will pay him $40 million on that deal to just go away. Wilks NFL resume includes time as an assistant head coach, defensive coordinator, or position coach for four different NFL squads before he was named to the head coach of the Arizona Cardinals back in 2018. Uh, that gig only lasted one year in which Wilks was given virtually no shot at success. Then he never got another shot at the head coaching again until now, when once again, he's inheriting a losing, demoralized squad that's been running to the ground by a coach who got the first deal despite having far less experience than Wilks.
So, yeah, man.
Yeah, man, I mean, you know, they're like, they're like, give him a little bit, ma, make him happy, give him, give him the hush. You know what I'm saying? And, and then, then, when, when, when you get, when you get the ball, you already back in the deep in your own territory, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so basically, the setup, the setup is basically, um, you know, it's been an outcry for, uh, uh, more, um, black coaches, uh, be a head coaches and, uh, who are not getting the job over people who have no coaching experience and get, and get qualified. And then usually, when we do get an opportunity, it's like you said, you already, uh, oh, fourth and, fourth and twenty.
Right, you know.
Fourth and twenty. And, uh, and so now that he's getting the opportunity, he's not getting the best shot. Like, you gotta, like, once again, we gotta go through elite obstacles to, um, prevail. So you inherited a team that you didn't build, you inherited, um, you know what I'm saying? And you got, now you gotta make do with what you got. So this season, basically, even if he do good or not, he not guaranteed the head coaching job. So if he does good, he probably won't get the gig.
Well, you know, and, and, and it's more or less a bone anyway, and you can tell he's positioned into it. They probably knew they was gonna have to get rid of Ruhl, but you know, he's one of the coaches that jumped on the floor as his, uh, lawsuit back in April, remember when two, when two former coaches joined him? He was one of them too. And, uh, and you know, but.
Yeah, that, yeah, I'm just, yeah, I just don't see him getting the job after the season, you know what I'm saying? Uh, he pretty much just getting it, like you said, cause dude sucked. Um, um, not, and not to say he probably won't be.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it's not, you know, it's nice work if you could get it, but you know what I'm saying? You still don't wanna lose sight, you know, I mean.
Well, yeah, it's highly likely he not gonna get it because see, you know, when you think about it, most owners wanna pick the coach themselves. So like you said, he was there as an assistant, and I guarantee if, um, I guarantee after the season, if a big fish like Sean Payton or one of these big type coaches comes available, he's out the door, you know what I'm saying? He's out the door. He, he could get him to the playoffs. He could, they could make one, and I guarantee he will not be that next, next year. I guarantee that, um, cause that's the kind of positions they give us. I mean, you get, we got all these great black coaches in HBCUs and all, and all through college and stuff, and a lot of guys don't get a shot. Like, who's the one guy, um, was it McVeigh or was it McVeigh or somebody? They don't even have no co, no college coaching experience. They never had no high school coaching experience in their head coach. It was somebody, I can't think of who.
Oh, yeah, yeah, matter of fact, I covered that not too long ago.
Right, yeah, and, and, and it's a ton of African.
Yeah, yeah, he got like high school quarterback coach experience or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, something like that, and, uh, he's automatically elevated to NFL coach. Even, I mean, we can even go with McVeigh. I mean, everybody be loud him, and you know, you could say, well, he won a Super Bowl, whatever, but damn. Um, he, how did he even get that shot? You get what I'm saying? Like, like.
He was still kid. He was still old, young enough to be in the league.
Exactly. So you, he, he, he got put in the position to succeed is what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and you gotta think, you know, Lovey Smith, you know, it's, it's a little different than this one cause he's the head coach now in, um, Texas, in Houston, but you know what I'm saying? He, he ain't have nowhere near as much experience as Lovey Smith. But you know, uh, Lovey Smith was really one of the more successful black coaches. I mean, shit, he, I mean, shucks, he got, uh, he got the Bears in the Super Bowl where they lost to Indy member.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think, um, I just think with just, you know, NFL is just one of them, um, leagues where, you know what I'm saying? They still got the good old boys there, cause most of the owners are, uh, you know, they're not black. So, um, you gonna continue to have, uh, uh, a lack of, uh, coaches. Like I said, usually when they get black coaches, they let you have a special, specialized position like receivers coach, running backs coach, DB coach, you know what I'm saying? And usually, we know those positions are not elevated to head coach. Usually who are elevated to head coaches, offensive line coach, defensive line coach, you know what I'm saying? Uh, if you, if you, if you coach the line, more than likely, you probably go get a head coaching job. Or even a linebacker. Sometimes linebackers coach can, you know what I'm saying, be elevated. But generally, when they give us the jobs, what are we, running backs coach? But generally, when they give us the jobs, what are we, running backs coach?
Tyler was a DB's coach.
You would think office a quarter like Eric Biennium at this offseason, he didn't even get a head coaching job, and he was office coordinator of the Kansas City Chiefs. And, uh, won the Super Bowl and nobody was really trying to get him in for any, um. Uh, interview, so. But move right along, we know what it is out there, y'all, you know what I'm saying? Even though, you know, I love sports, whatever, I play sports, I play, we, you know, love sports, we love sports and what comes along with it, fans.
Yeah, I got my high school letter, we did that.
Yeah, yeah, but we know what goes on behind, um, behind the scenes too, um, you know what I'm saying, um. My grandfather read Jim Brown's book, the one he put out, um, I can't think of what it's called, Something Slave. But, um, it's one of his, it was one of my grandfather's past favorite books, Jim Brown was talking about, you know what I'm saying? So, um, but yeah, man, um. Uh, we definitely need more opportunities and, um, oh, one more thing I wanna bring up, we'll move it along, um, even you. I even see this with now, you know, they got female coaches. There's a sister on, uh, the Washington Commanders. She's a running backs coach. Now, I'm not knocking the sister for being a running backs coach, but my thought is this. We barely got any black male coaches in the league and y'all, y'all, y'all elevating sisters to running backs coaches and stuff like that. We put it this way, the, the brothers, we ain't even had our run in the league yet. We ain't head coach. It ain't like ten or twelve black head coaches in the league or nothing like that, where like, okay. You know, we didn't have our run, okay, now I can, I can see a sister being a coach or female doing. You got female coaches in the league and, and black men can't even then get a head job, you know what I'm saying? So I just, you know.
I, I'd be, uh, any of the female coaches black, ain't it? She black, ain't she?
Yeah, she black, but the thing is, is that if black men can't even get elevated, why, it's a reason to you. This, there's a reason there, uh, and she's gay too, so I'm gonna put that out there. She black. So there's a reason they're elevating them over black men. Like, like, you see, you're gonna see. Think about what I'm saying is not that she shouldn't have a job. I'm not knocking, she could be, she probably a hell of a coach. But the thought is, is that generally, if black men are still having trouble in twenty twenty two. Getting a, a head coaching job, what the fuck are we talking about? A black female, uh, being a running backs coach? We ain't even ready for that yet. And it, but the reason they do that is because think about this, I'll employ her, I'd rather have her. As a head over yo male ass. You see what I'm saying? It's a thing of power, it's a thing of power, man, you know what I'm saying? As they say, too many bulls in the, um, pen or whatever. So, yeah, I'll elevate this gay black stud. But I, but I'm not gonna elevate. I'm not gonna elevate you, um, um, Todd Bowles or whoever, you know what I'm saying? Todd Bowles is, he the head coach now, but what I'm saying, you know what I'm saying, um.
Yeah, yeah, like Byron, Byron Lefwitch.
Cause think about how many brothers could have took that running backs job? So you telling me it ain't, you telling me she's better than, show me all the brothers that, that's running, that wanna run a bass coach that's in college. And it, and it's in the league now. And so you telling me she better than all them and I'm not.
But, I mean, it, it, it is kinda like one of the senses, situations where more than one team win, I'll take the black, you know, tally. You know, just for the job, but there's a bigger thing at play here, you know what I'm saying?
That's what I'm saying.
But I, I, I'll take it though. I, I'm more on the side that I'll take the.
I won't take it because I, I feel like that's, that's a, that's an extinction level event, like. You see, cause what you gonna see is, you see that one, then you gonna see more, then all of a sudden. Why, why we ain't got no more black coaches? Cause all of them, now we got number of black studs, cause coaches in now. So we don't have no blackmail coaches, no. Cause they, they're even two in Chicago, that's a high school, or I think it's like Pop Warner or high school. It's two stud black women coaches in Chicago, and I'm not knocking nobody for coaching, but my thing is. I'm just, I'm, let's keep it all the way a thousand on this show. Man, I, I feel it today. What, and, and, and I've, and I've been feeling this way, and I'm gonna get this out here, I'm gonna have a Corey Holcomb moment, shout out to my boy Corey Holcomb. Why in the fuck are there so many women in male sports as far as? Sports cast, and when I turn on ESPN, all I see is women. Now, when I, you see referees, you see more women. Now you see more women coaches, so. I'm not saying they can't do the job. What I'm saying is what the fuck can a female running back coach tell me as a man about, she ain't never fucking played the fucking game? She ain't never played again, and you can't tell me, oh, well, they got, I know they got leagues for women and stuff like that, but that is not equivalent to the NFL, man. Landry League and, 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 uh, even the list, they do have like a little stud league, I do, I've seen that. That's not equivalent to NFL. I mean, coaching. It, I guess it goes back to the thing of even with me and, you know, how a guy who ain't never played the game and he's a coach or whatever. So I guess, I guess you can, so I'm gonna take that back. I guess you can. I'm just saying, I do, I mean, I don't like it, that don't mean I like it though. The game would be a coach, but I'm saying as far as females infiltrating the male sport, you don't see a bunch of. Um, uh, 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 like, like, it's a lot of, it's a lot of females that could be coached. Like in the WNBA, it's hella motherfucking, uh, female coaches, but you see some male coaches, right? But, um, but you know why you, honestly, I'm gonna be real, I think why you see so many male coaches? Is because a lot of females don't coach, or they don't wanna coach their own sport. It's like, why you wanna come over to our side? I don't know, man, I just think that's a problem, man, you know what I'm saying? Like, like. In the NFL, man, it's hard to get a coaching gig, period. And now you putting, you getting, putting studs over black men who are highly qualified, been coaching all. And not to say she have it. We ain't ready for that yet. We ain't even, we don't, we, but we don't even make up, black males don't even make up half the league in coaching. We only make up fifty percent, so how the fuck we gonna be like, I, I, I mean, how can I just jump on the bandwagon? You know what I'm saying of this? So I'm gonna leave it there, y'all. Y'all leave it a comment, y'all probably disagree. But that's, that's the thing, no, man, but that, but, but that's how we get into movies like The Women King and shit like that, man. We still, it's still. See, like, when we, when you blurring these gender lines, that, that, that causes a lot of damage and people don't wanna admit that, but it does, man, like, like, um. Just like, I don't, I don't like the fact they got male cheerleaders in the NFL. I don't like it. I don't know. Get that shit out of here, man. I mean, and I, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, man, it just, it's just. I mean, it's no different than if Drew Paul was ha- RuPaul was having a drag race, having somebody they deemed up there. What if they had, what if they had somebody who was a straight person up there doing, and they'd be like, wait a minute, why RuPaul can't be hosting the show? It's the same thing, man. Ain't nobody trying to be mean towards them. It's just the fact that like, why do we have male fucking cheerleaders in the field? I mean, come on, man, this, this shit, this, this the agenda, dude.
Hey, they keeping the same energy, I guess.
Yeah, man, yeah, man, uh, I'm put that one out there. I gotta, yeah, I have my, um, I have my tinfoil kufi game. Hit that like and subscribe button, you know. Nothing but some good content. We got Swag up here, man. He was commenting on the coaching situation. But now we gonna move on along here, um, what's your next story? Swag got something else for us, y'all.
Oh, yeah, um, it's Ray have something to say.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Alright, so Issa Rae is calling out Hollywood and yearning for the industry to listen to women. Um, sharing in the recent interview with L Hollywood. Uh, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, she did a recent review with L how Hollywood would protect his offenders. In efforts to save the project. And, and she said, while I don't support people jumping to media conclusions. And I think it's entirely fair for investigations to happen. I think it's extremely important to, like the mantra says, listen to women. I say that in air quotes because that's the quote of the, of the movement. Uh, she told the publication, I'm gonna be real. The stuff that's happening with Ezra, Ezra Miller to me is a microcosm of Hollywood. There, there, there's this person who's a repeat offender and who's been behaving atrociously. And as opposed to shutting them down and shutting down a production. Uh, there's an effort to save the movie and end them. That is a clear example of the list that Hollywood will go to save itself and protect offenders. Uh, Miller has been the topic of conversation this year due to the number of disorderly conduct allegations against them. Um, including a woman speaking out two years after a situation where Miller choked her. In a statement to people, uh, Miller shares an apology in how they're actively working to deal with their mental health issue. Um, and then Ezra Miller said. Yeah, but you know, uh, uh, his pronoun is they though. I mean, her, yeah, their pronoun is they, um, it's it, uh. Uh, they said, uh, having recently gone through a time of intense crisis. I now understand that I am suffering complex mental health issues and have begun ongoing treatment, Miller expressed. Now, see, okay, now Ezra Miller, uh, they're playing The Flash in this upcoming my, uh, DC movie. But, uh, what hap- what? The way it looks like, the reason it looks like that besides what it is, is that Warner Brothers recently got, you know, bought out. And then like, so all this happened under the O V gene, the movie The Flash. It's already been in the can for two years now, but they put it off because of the quarantine. You know, they're trying to get optimal, um, uh, uh, you know, ticket sales. Anyway, um. So, yeah, uh, they were wilding out for a while. They got into like three public incidents. One, uh, uh, they, they attacked a woman, but the woman that they was out, they was outside a bar in Germany. Or, or Switzerland or somewhere, smoking a cigarette. And then, um, the woman, they were just talking and then she said, I bet you couldn't kick my ass. And, and they, um, you know, they grabbed her by the throat and took her to the ground. And then there's another, uh, incident to where he was saying racist names. And, um, and then just being belligerent drunk and not wanting to leave an establishment. But then, uh, all this stuff happened during the old Warner, old Warner Brothers regime. And so the new one came out and they put the film on ice. They didn't, they didn't shut it down, but it's actually before it got in any trouble. The movie was already filmed.
Basically, this dude, and like I say, and once again, uh, y'all, I, I don't do the pronoun things. So basically, this dude is using pronouns so he could beat up women, um, so he whoop a woman's ass. All the real abuse of men, they could be like, hey, I'm non-binary. You came from me, I'm dating, nigga. We did it. So you know what I'm saying? So I'm just saying that, that, to me, that's just a way for you to beat up women. And then you could say, when you about to get caught, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. That's like you do, remember who got, we did the story on, the brother who, uh. Got locked up with the women or whatever and turned, um, transgender, so he could be locked up with women, then got some pregnant. You know what I'm saying? So like, that's what I'm saying, a lot of these. Uh, people with all these, oh, I feel this way and this, I'm not, nah, man. You whooped a woman's ass and, uh, I will agree with, I don't tend to agree with Issa Rae a lot. But, uh, I agree with her on this one because it's basically, he's a white dude. And, uh, he, that's, I'm just, I'm gonna put it, I'm gonna put it in layman's terms. This is a white man who wants to say that he's a they. So he could beat up women and get away saying racist shit, and then he could get up and whooping women's ass. Cause that's what he liked to do, cause he hates. You know what I'm saying? So, so now I don't identify with anything. So now you can't put anything on me, so I could whip anybody ass. Because now I don't identify with anything. So you, now you, you can't say I beat up women, cause I'm they, I'm, 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 I'm a rock. You see what I'm saying? So I just think, yeah, I mean, she's right. And then they still going on with the movie. Now imagine if a brother had did that, if a brother had snatched a woman up by her neck. And, um, and did that and whooped her up just cause, uh, Q, Cubicity Junior, he just got off on his case or whatever.
But, yeah, that's what I was explaining to you, the movie was already in the can. Was already done being filmed and produced, I mean, edited. They just haven't released it yet, and I think that they're waiting for this to die down, but, uh. This, uh, recent quote for Ezra Miller, you know what I'm saying? This was the first time he said anything about it. In two years when the shit first started.
Well, man, I just think that, yeah, I think she's hit this one on the head. Like I said, I generally don't agree with her, um. Yeah, she nailed it. I mean, I give her a, she nailed that one because, um, that's true, um, you know what I'm saying? Basically, they just, they just let him be racist and what they do anyway, like, like. From, 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 look, from Dylan Roof to Kyle Rittenhouse to this little boy in Raleigh who just shot up everybody. They, 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 you know, you just get, when you, you a white male and young, you can get, get away with a lot of shit. And this dude, like I said, he's using pronouns, so he, oh, you can't touch me now. Cause remember, I'm a pronoun. I, I didn't, I'm not a man beating this woman up. You see what I'm saying? Like. That's why I don't, I think when you get into that, these, uh, different words or labels for people because of how they feel and not what they are, what's real. Then you get into a lot of, it's just a lot of, I mean, you can make up so many rules, I mean.
Hey, hey, so, so, so is it, is, is it fair to call him like a cis male because he was born male or?
I don't know what none of that stuff, all I know, that's a man, that's, that, if he's born.
It's spelled CIS, but if you're cis male, like, we're cis male. Well, CIS, that's just the word that, the, the, the way they describe a person that was born.
That's the word, that's the word that how gay people call it. I'm not a cis, nothing. You know what I'm saying? I don't, I don't do the, I don't do the, like, you know. And I got a sister. Just like how I'm respecting them, and they can't respect that, then, see, that's what I'm saying, like. I'm, I'm gonna say it, I mean, you know, it's not. Unless the three percent can't run me, the less the three percent can't run me. They can't run me and they can't be the majority and speak for me. So I'm sorry, I apologize. That, now, they are entitled to say what they wanna say, I feel how they wanna feel. And they're not, and they, and they shouldn't be, you know what I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not advocating no violence towards ones, they should not be bothered. They wanna live that way, they live with it, but you're not gonna dictate. My kids, and we, and I'm glad you brought this up too, though. I'm glad you brought this up because that rolls us right into. I'm just saying, like, that just rolls us right into, um, this, I was gonna get on, uh, Easter egg, but this seem bigger, but, uh. It rolls us right into these dudes here. Guys here, you see them all there? This, that is what you, this is a, um, our next, so it was a gay male choir. They're singing, we're coming for your kids. Um, it says, it was a message from, this is real life. They said, uh, this is a, um. This is a, let me put them up on the screen, yeah, this is a gay male choir. And they, uh, basically, uh, they're in San Francisco. And they perform a song with the lyrics, we're coming for your children. The San Francisco Gay Men's Choir posted a YouTube video where the choir says, we're coming for your children. The song speaks of, speaks of converting children. To promote tolerance exposes them to content their parents don't want them to see. A report shows that there has been a marked increase in LGBT characters in children's television shows, as well as family entertainment shows. Uh, so here's some of the lyrics from the song. We'll convert your children happens bit by bit quietly and subtly, and you will barely notice it. Warn them from San Francisco, make them wear pleated pants, we don't care. We'll convert your children, we'll make them tolerant and fair, just like you're worried. They'll change their group of friends, you won't approve of where they go at night. And you'll be disgusted when they start learning things online that you kept far from their sight. Listen to the lyrics of that song. We coming for your kids. And that don't sound like nothing, uh, happy and happy about that. He said, they say that, you know, at night, we want, you trying to keep them from stuffing night, we wanna expose them. Cause we trying to make them tolerant. We'll convert you, there's another one, we'll convert your children, yes, we will, reaching one in all. There's really no escaping it, cause even grandma likes RuPaul. The world's getting kinder, Gen X is gayer than Grindr. We're coming for them, we're coming for your children, the gay agenda is coming home. And, uh, there's a video of them singing this, so that picture, where you see them, this, these guys, they're all singing this, all men.
Hey, man, hey, that picture like they saying, don't you worry about the things.
They talking about converting your kids, um.
Hey, man, hey, and, 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 um, that kind of, um, makes me think about, uh, you know, they, they are finally. Uh, I, I heard another mention where they were talking. Uh, I, I heard another mention where they were talking about, what's the acronym for the uh?
Oh, maps, maps.
Eh, yeah, and, and I heard it's a little discourse in that community now because they're really trying to push to bring that part of the acronym. The LGBTQ gang.
Yeah, also NAMBLA, um, which is like his organization to promote, you know, them wanting to. So, but yeah, when you hear the lyrics to that song, um, that just, that don't really sound, that don't sound like, um. That don't sound like nothing, now, you know, that, that, it don't sound like they trying to promote tolerance at all. It's not.
And, and it don't sound like they really saying the shit tongue, tongue in cheek, you know, they're, they're, they're telling you the game plan, they mapping out the playbook.
They say before you barely even notice it, bit by bit. They said quietly and subtly. He said, you can keep them from disco, warn them about San Francisco, American, we're pleaded pants, we don't care. We gonna convert them. That's, see what I'm saying? So that, that's why me personally, I don't do the whole pronouns. I'm not, I'm a, I'm a. I'm gonna be resp- but one thing though, I'm gonna be respectful towards you. You know what I'm saying? I'm not gonna treat you any kind of way. I'm about, hey, how you doing? You know what I'm saying now? You're not gonna say, hey, well, I'm a this, so you gotta call me this. No, I'm going to call you what you were born, I'm sorry.
Is mama name Clay? I'ma call him Clay.
Exactly, or I'ma call you by your name. Like, if you tell me, hey, man, my name is such and such, I call you by your name, whatever. I'ma look at you crazy, but if you get to say, you call me this is a miss. If it's a misses or miss behind that, but y'all, you ain't getting called that. Nope, nope. You know what I'm saying? Like. Like, nah, I'm not going that far with it. You know what I'm saying? I'll be respectful. And if you tell me your name and that's what your name is, I say, oh, okay, how you doing? Boom. But I'm not about to be, hey, Mrs. Such is, and you, 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 we both got poles. And I'm, this is calling you a miss, get out of here.
Oh, you doing, I'm like on the Miss J side of the game?
I mean, it just feel, I'm not, I'm not trying to, trying to be mean. It just don't feel like, we, I feel weird doing it. And I've met people who in that lifestyle. Uh, had to work with them. And you know what they told me? Like, cause I seen the name and the mo- and the person, it was a male name. And then when I seen the person on the Zoom, I'm like. And they was like, oh, yeah, man, I, I, I switched up or whatever, but you can call me, you know, my, my legal name, or you can call me what, you know, this name. Respectfully, I was like, well, you know what, you know, when, the, the thing is, the person came in, you know what I'm saying? Cause the women we worked with was like, no, I'm not calling him that. I'm calling him what his daddy named him. That's what the women say. So, but had to say, I mean, you know what I'm saying? But the thing is, but what made this person cool, uh, that I had to work with it, and it was a supervisor too. Is that they didn't try to, you know, saying enforce their views on you. You know what I'm saying? Mama was like, call me whatever you want to. You know what I'm saying? I don't really care, I don't trip on that. You know, um, so, I'm just saying, y'all, I, I, I'm just saying, so y'all got me painted out bad, I'm just saying. I'm, I'm, I met somebody else who roll like that and they like, just call me whatever, it's all good, I ain't dripping on it. You know, but moving right along, I just wanted to bring that to attention, man. Oh, on the kid, the kid, we gotta protect our kid, children, man. And as you, that article said, I wanna hit on this real quick. Um, you seeing this more, these LGBT characters more in children's cartoons, different little Nickelodeon shows. Um, things like that, Netflix and stuff. So we definitely, you have to protect your children from what they're taking in and watch it because. There is an agenda out there, um, who is trying to uh, you know, sway them to a certain side. You know what I'm saying? And I, and I, I'm not saying that's the case, you know, saying for everybody, but they, it's saying that, the, the, they singing about it. They singing, they letting you know what, what the deal is. Um.
I ain't gonna lie though, man, I, I'm more concerned about the maps than anything else.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so, um. Well, I mean, the, well, well, there's not a, there's not a difference in them com- from what the maps say. Because they looked at themselves as just like LGBTQ. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, but you know, I mean, they're just trying to, to, to establish a, a, a humanizing effect, you know? Like a humanizing quality to, to their group.
Exactly.
What's it called? A minor attractive one?
Minor attracted persons. Uh, so, but what I'm saying is, a lot of times, um. I mean, we definitely gotta worry about, that's the main thing you gotta worry about is, you wanna, you know, definitely be aware of child predators around your kids and. Uh, and NAMBLA, beware of NAMBLA, North American Man Boy Love Association, that's what it's called. North American Man Boy Love Association. It is a pedophilia and pedestrian advocacy organization in the United States. They're the ones who's pushing to get their letters added on to that LGB thing. Um, but that's what I'm saying that, um, you still have to watch your kids, man. I mean, like, um. I'm just saying, this is, this, just from my experiences, most of the people who I know in that lifestyle don't wanna be in that lifestyle. I'm just be real with you. It's not like the ones I've met personally and have told me how they got in that lifestyle. They like, dude. Most, I'm, that's what I'm saying, uh, that, now, I would say ninety-five percent of the people I met in that lifestyle all had some kind of childhood trauma. So that's what I'm saying. It links, you know, I know how you said, why we're predators, they, they go hand in hand, because. You know what I'm saying? It's kinda going hand in hand.
B-side material right there.
Yeah, 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 we gonna cover it on the B-side, but moving right along, man. Welcome, we can hot podcast, hit that like, subscribe. But leave your comments there. We love you, you know, I love everybody, but I'm just saying, man, I gotta tell that is sometimes, man. You know, sometimes. It's hard self saying some truths because a lot of times it might hurt people's feelings and thing, and that's not what we here to do with hurting nobody feelings. But I'm just saying, I gotta, I gotta let it out sometimes, but you could lose your comment. You know what I'm saying? Moving right along, speaking of, speaking of the kids and the, and the, and the chilling, then we gonna kick it back to swag, uh, cause this goes line and line. Um, this little boy here, um, rest guy, uh, this little boy here now. The scariest thing for most parents is losing their kids. His little boy lost at the airport right there, right? And uh, people, uh, that'd be the scariest thing if you have a child right now, you lose your kid, you in the grocery store or something, you like, damn, what the hell my baby at? You know, you looking around, that like your heart beating fast. Um, there was a, um. Basically, there was a uh, a TikTok video that went viral, um, that was talking about, there was a uh, white woman. Who was quizzing, who was, her, her toddler was sitting in the, a car seat or whatever. And the mother was quizzing the kid and asking them, asking the child, uh, what do you do, you know, if you get lost? And the kid, and she's, and the kiss, she asked the kid again, the kid didn't say nothing. He's like, what do you do when you get lost? And uh, the kid was like, um, I go find, the little boy said, I go find a big black guy. The little boy said, I go find a big black guy. And the mom said, yeah, that's right. Now every, in uh, it went viral because everybody was like, why is she telling the kid to go get a big black guy? Why did, you know, find a black man if he get, if the child get lost? You know what I'm saying? The reason is, um. Uh, basically, uh, seventy-seven percent of child predators are not black. That's why the mother told him that.
Go girl.
Seventy-seven percent, that's what this white woman told him that. It's cause seventy-seven percent of child predators are actually white, um. And those three, uh, in, uh, so she basically told the little boy, I got the video, I'm gonna pull it up now.
Yeah, the law ravage just said that they're the good guy in this scenario, you know?
Exactly. And well, we, we pretty much always been a good guy in black society. We don't, that's not like, you can't like, like. This is true. You can't go to a group of black people and say, hey, y'all know where I can get a kid at? You get your ass killed. Other societies, other, other societies, unfortunately, like Latino or even our brothers Africa, you can go get you a kid over there. You know what I'm saying? Where the kids at? Oh, they right here. You know what I'm saying? But in black society, that's not a thing for us.
Got somebody that actually is in South America and stuff too.
Exactly, there too. So you can't come around us and be like, hey, man, where, hey, y'all know, we all got, we can get a kid, but here's the little TikTok video. I'm gonna play it for y'all, uh, fair use. Here we go.
What do you do if you get lost? You find a big black guy and what do you tell him? That you're lost?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I find my home.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so, um, yeah, man. So little man, you know, he saying, go find a big black dude.
He said, you know what, she's right.
She, she playing, you're right, she playing the law averages, so it's at least almost an eighty percent chance that her son get lost, he gonna make it.
Do some good eyes.
You know what I'm saying? Because most of the time, like I say, in black society, um. Not to say that people don't get molested or whatever, or we have those things going on, but it's not a big, it's not a major thing in our system culture like it is in other cultures. Reason why we know that is because you can even, you can always look back at history. In slavery times, uh, white people always left their kids with us. They always had the midwife, they always had mammy and, and uh, or, or you know what I'm saying? They always, uncle, uncle.